I will call meeting to order. And at this time, I'll turn it over to clerk.
Through you, your worship. As noted, counselor seven is absent from the meeting. And I will now begin with. One second just turning.
I am connected, yes. I was.
Your worship, I think that is much better. Okay, my apologies. So begin with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Turning to item two. Declarations of care interests. Are there any declarations of the care interests to be made? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting dated July 12th and the minutes of the special meeting dated July 19th of the Corporation of the City of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Moved by Counselor Basilakos and seconded by Counselor Bunting. Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it.
Item four is adoption of the addenda, and just prior to today's meeting, there was a second addenda that was circulated. And there is a motion that the addenda to the regular agenda of council and standing committees dated July 26th to add items 5.2, 5.3, 7.11, 11.9, and 11.10 be added to the agenda as printed.
Counselor Ingram moving, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it.
Item five is reported committee of the whole in camera session, and item 5.1, just prior to today's regular council meeting, an in-camera session was held to consider the following items. Item 4.1 being the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 636 Water Division Contract Negotiations Update, and that was considered under labor relations or employee negotiations. And the second item being 5.1, appointment to the Partners for Climate Protection Program. And that matter was considered under the Personal Matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal employees or local board employees. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on both items. So turning to your addenda. Item 5.2 is with respect to the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 636 Water Division Contract Negotiations Update. And there is a motion that council ratified the memorandum of settlement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers IVEW Water Division Local 636 effective May 1st to April 30th, 2025, that the mayor, clerk, and senior staff officials be authorized to execute the collective agreement on behalf of the Corporation of the City of Stratford.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Gaffey and seconded by Counselor Henderson. Discussion. If not all in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it. Thank you.
Item 5.3 is appointment to the Partners for Climate Protection Program. And there is a motion that Counselor Vasilakos be appointed as the elected official representative for the City of Stratford in the Partners for Climate Protection Program.
Moved by Counselor Bunting and seconded by Counselor Burbak. All those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it.
Returning to your agenda, item six is hearings of deputations and presentations. And item 6.1 is a presentation by the Stratford General Hospital Foundation. And there is a motion that the presentation by Andrea Page, Andrew Williams, and Paul Rolston be heard.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Beatty and seconded by Counselor Ingram. That the presentation be heard. All those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it. The clerk will welcome the delegation into the meeting at this time.
Thank you, your worship and counselors, for this further opportunity to share with you the impact of giving on local care. Last time we spoke, many counselors had seen firsthand through tours or a visit to the hospital, both the impact of philanthropy and the continuing and urgent need to invest in infrastructure and technology. Since then, COVID has inflicted anxiety and hardship on so many. It had helped us, and it has helped to illuminate our strengths and our weaknesses. And it confirmed what we already knew, that staff and our physicians are our greatest assets and our greatest strength. But it also revealed our Achilles' heel, that we have outdated equipment and facilities not built for pandemics. Next slide, please. At no time in our hospital's history have people been more aware of the importance of healthcare, the importance of hospitals and our caregivers, and the impact they have on all of our lives. Our hospital staff and physicians are really truly our healthcare heroes. And every one of them have given 110%. Next, please. But our community has also been there for us, from painted rocks and signs to drive-bys and donations of PPE. And when we asked for help to support us during COVID, over $350,000 was raised. And it was raised for pulse detectors, thermometers for our ICU, resuscitation training, specialized lab equipment, and staff support. And the last time we presented our feasibility study indicated that SGH was a point of pride in our community. And during this fight against COVID, in so many ways, our community has shown how much they truly care and how much they care for our hospital. There were hundreds of moments which made a difference and really bolstered our spirits. For me, it was the Girl Guides, and they drove by our hospital with homemade signs and a lot of honking. And I can't remember crying so hard. I was so touched, knowing they were there for our hospital. They were there rooting for us, like so many others. Next, please. And the city of Stratford has always been there for us, always been rooting for us. Our Heart and Soul Campaign exceeded $20 million goal, because that was because of your then pledge of $5 million, which was 25% of our goal. And that pledge was the catalyst to pay setting donations and another $2.7 million from other municipalities who followed your lead. Next slide, please. But you don't stand alone in your generosity, and that's absolutely wonderful. There's a report on municipal giving that shows this. But municipal requests have been on hold during most of COVID. And many hospital requests are just starting back, and many hospitals are connecting with their municipalities now and in the next few months. But we've seen so far that COVID has not negatively impacted giving. In fact, just this month, Niagara Regional Council committed $44.5 million to support South Niagara Hospitals campaign, and that was 21% of their goal. Next, please. Your investment in the North Wing has already had over a decade of impact. Thousands of thousands of people yearly, each patient and their family, they're really truly grateful for your support. And I talked to these patients, and I talked to a lot of the donors, and I asked them all the same question. I asked them, what's the most important thing to you about the hospital? And the answer is always the same or a variation of the same, is that the hospital was there, that the hospital was able to care for them when they needed it most. And SGH was there when I needed it most, saved my husband's life. And in fact, three out of four members of my family are alive today because of SGH. And I hear that story. In fact, there was a photo op just a few weeks ago where a gentleman came up to me and said, I made it to emerge, and my heart stopped. They started it for me. And it was so powerful. I gave him a big hug. Don't worry, I had my mask on. But I thought it warranted a hug even during COVID. Next slide, please. The city commitment is truly the catalyst for our campaign launch and is catalyst for securing for the municipal gifts. COVID has not changed our need for technology, and it's not changed our need for infrastructure and recruitment of the best. In fact, it's underlined that equipment like cardiac monitors and X-ray machines, all of these need a shot in the arm, and we need an infusion of support to build this even stronger, healthier hospital for the years ahead. Next, please. We have already spent over $7.5 million on equipment. Our community has supported us as much as they could, even through economic hardships and the impact of COVID. In fact, the generosity from our community so far has been absolutely inspiring. They have raised $14.3 million in cash and pledges towards our $30 million working goal. That is absolutely phenomenal. Next slide, please. In fact, this last year alone, and I know you got to really squint to see this slide, but it underlines how much equipment we bought in the last year alone. $1.5 million spent on equipment from 35 new hospital beds to infant warmers to defibrillators and specialized lab equipment. And in fact, for this fiscal year, we've already committed another $2.3 million to absolutely essential equipment, because our hospital can't wait and our patients can't wait. As you know, we don't receive ministry funding for equipment, and we need to support our physicians and caregivers, giving them the tools for them to do their jobs, just to take care of us, to take care of our community. Your support has been our strength in the past, and you've always been an important partner in our care. And you've always been rooting for us, and we truly thank you for that. Now, I'd like to introduce our hospital CEO, Andrew Williams, who will be presenting the next few slides. Next slide, please.
Thanks very much, Andrea, and again, thank you, your worship and members of council for allowing our delegation to present to you today. You know, I'd like to start my brief comments and simply say thank you to council and this community for the way you've led during the last 18 months. You know, to say it's been a bit surreal is a major understatement, and there's not a single person in our community, both more broadly and within our organization, that has not been touched directly through the pandemic. And I remember early in, early days in the pandemic, we shared this visual with our team, sort of reinforcing how we felt we needed to present ourselves, whether it's demonstrating compassion, understanding each other's fears, protecting the vulnerable. And it really became evident to me that those communities that were successful in a very challenging time followed these basic expectations, and you did that exceptionally well, and I can't say thank you enough. You know, what it also, though, I think highlighted, or continues to highlight, is how important it is that we stay connected. And within the health system, if you have looked at the anatomy of the pandemic, you've seen that it has affected different groups of individuals very, very differently. And to me, it's a call to arms for our health system and our broader health and social service systems to really redouble our efforts to making sure that we are identifying and addressing the true health and wellness needs across our community. And for us to be able to do that, not only do we need to be regularly engaged, but we need to be ready. And you know, part of the conversation today with council and through previous councils is how key it is for us to invest proactively as an organization to make sure that we have the tools necessary to support those who present and our team members who are here. You know, we've gone through different waves in the pandemic. We're in the third wave and doing everything in our power to prevent a fourth wave. The third has certainly been the hardest on us as an organization. We've seen the most patients admitted into our intensive care unit. We've had to deploy staff from other parts of the organization to support those individuals. And throughout, as Andrea said, the support and caring and compassion received from the city and from our communities has been absolutely phenomenal. Next slide, please. Just want to quickly run through a few slides, just on some activity, just to reinforce. And these are things that you've seen, and these are more refreshed for this year. But just to reinforce how far-reaching our organization is and how many lives we touch on a daily basis. This slide shares patient days, so in essence, a patient day is an individual who stays overnight in one of our hospital beds, and they break down by different types. And you can see that even though we, through the pandemic, certainly early on and later in phase three, we were restricting certain services, we were still very busy on the inpatient side, and we still had a lot of people needing care. Where we saw reductions were on our non-essential surgical services. And I use the word "non-essential" really guardedly, because anybody who needs care, it is essential. And our commitment now is obviously to get back on track. Next slide, please. This one shows emergency department visits, and you may recall, early in the pandemic, our emergency department visits dropped significantly. There was, in the first wave, I think the most pronounced aspect of it was fear of the unknown. And while numbers of COVID cases didn't present in our hospitals to the degree they did later on in the pandemic, the societal impact was huge, because people were very much taking to heart staying at home. And we had to do a lot of work, actually, reminding people that if you need care, you need to come in. You know, it was one of our concerns throughout the pandemic, was people were avoiding care that they could get, which would make things worse down the road. So our ED visits are going back up again. And you know, we have a very active department in Stratford and across the HPA. We have four emergency departments, and we're continuing to provide, I think, a really strong, on-the-ground service for our communities. Next slide, please. I throw this one in. You know, we're not in the business of tooting our own horn a lot, but I just thought it was nice. And you know, as we've gone through challenging times, you know, we have had to look at ways that we can really support our team. And this just simply reflects that our orthopedic program at our Stratford Hospital was chosen as one of the world's best specialized hospitals in 2021, based on a Newsweek analysis. And you would have probably seen these reports come out in different ways throughout the year. But again, really good reminder that, you know, we don't operate in a large urban center, but we sure have a very dynamic, very competent, capable, compassionate team. And we provide a lot of services that you may not see in organizations and communities of our size. And don't ever lose sight of the fact that one of the key reasons we can do that is the support of the City of Stratford every time we've shown up. Next slide, please. This just shows our birthing activity. We actually were sort of tongue-in-cheek expecting to see a major spike in births after the first lockdown. That didn't occur, but you know, we are seeing steady increase in births. We have seen, though, when you look at the unintended impacts of the pandemic, we saw a massive drop in respiratory presentations in our pediatric populations. I don't think we had an inpatient flu case last year. So when we look at our activity and our volumes, we've seen a shift in sort of the makeup of it through some of the very proactive public health practices that are in place. Next slide, please. This shows our oncology visits, and this is one of the key programs that we're clearly looking to augment as part of this campaign. And you know, unfortunately, you can see our numbers continue to climb in this important area. And it's so, so key for us to ensure that our closer-to-home services and our investments are at the level that they need to be. And you know, we do expect these numbers to continue to increase as we plan for and redevelop this very important service. Next slide, please. I wanted to share, I recall when we actually were able to have meetings in person. I recall attending council meeting and discussing at the time the issue of unattached patients and family physician recruitment. There was a lot of conversation around, do we walk in clinics in our community? And I just wanted to highlight, you know, the successes that we've had as an organization and as a community, as we've recruited physicians over the last year. And as you know, we have a very dynamic individual, Lori Roberts, who works closely with, not only internally within the hospital, but with our family health teams. And we've had significant success in recruiting family physicians and specialists into our community. We've seen some turnover through retirements, and we're always looking at making sure that we renew and refresh. There can be gaps, but if we look at where we are today with unattached patients, we have come a long, long way since discussing with council the importance of ramping this up. And it's an issue that's going to be with us, you know, obviously, moving forward, not only with physicians. Next slide, please, but with our team in general. And if I have to leave you with one thing today from my brief remarks, it's that our biggest challenge of all, none, is recruiting and retaining healthcare professionals in every aspect of our operation. It's remarkably competitive. The pandemic has had a significant impact on people's views around their career. We expect that we're going to see a number of retirements coming out of the system as we come out of the pandemic. We are seeing increased pressures in other sectors for staff. And it is so, so, so important that we, as an organization, ensure that we have the tools, the resources necessary to attract individuals to this community. Most people who are going to be looking after us when we need care don't live here yet. We have to bring them here. We have to make sure our health system is responsible and conducive to their needs. And we have to continue to ensure our community is welcoming. You know, there's a lot of work on diversity, equity, and inclusion right now, which is so, so important. A lot of work on affordable housing right now, which is so, so important. A lot of work on economic development. Don't ever underestimate the impact that a new business in town has on our ability to recruit and retain future healthcare professionals. All these things knit together, and it is a massive area of focus for us and one we're only going to excel in with the support of groups like yours and others. Next slide, please. You do know we put a lot of emphasis and effort on partnerships. And you know, as I said earlier on in my talk, the, one of the massive lessons from the pandemic is the more integrated we are as a society, the better able we are to respond to issues like this. And we have some wonderful programs. We have some great partnerships with the city. And you know, I really want to give a shout out to those who are on the ground, working with us on some really innovative programs. But we really try hard to make sure that we coordinate, we support, we work closely with our long-term care partners, with our primary care partners, our community partners. EMS, can't say enough about how they've supported us through the pandemic. And we know that our ability to succeed is going to be built on how strong those relationships continue to be. Next slide, please. You know, one of the things that our people, and I have to, I'm embarrassed to say, I think healthcare is the only business in the world that still uses fax machines. But we do, and I don't really know of any area where technology is advancing as fast as it is in healthcare. It seems almost every day there's a new tool, a new drug therapy, something else we have to assess, evaluate, determine if we need it here. But it's really changing very quickly, and this visual just shows in how quickly we've gone from actual phone to handheld devices, and who knows what the next iteration is going to be. But unless you are proactive, unless you're investing as an organization, you miss those opportunities and you set yourself back. Next slide, please. This is on performance, and you know, we often look at it, and I'm going to hand over to Paul after this slide. We often don't view healthcare as a business. And obviously, it's a social business, but it is a business nonetheless. And as a result, we have to run ourselves as a business. And that does make us look at things through perhaps a different lens than people might expect. But it always causes us to look at how we do what we do. What technology do we need? What technology needs to be updated? What facilities need to be renovated? Are they as patient and family focused as they need to be? Does the current technology allow us to attract the new grads coming out? And are we able to support in not only our direct patient care areas, but all areas of the hospital, the ability to keep people in the community and the ability to respond to the latest technology? You know, one of the keys coming out of the pandemic is going to be a ramp up in virtual care. And we've been very involved in that, and a lot of what we're doing through this campaign, as we look at how we support our mental health populations, can we do it differently? Can we make it more accessible without people coming into large, often intimidating buildings in our health system? So bottom line is, as I look at where we are today, and I look at council, and I look at the support that you've provided us, and hopefully, the support that we can continue to enjoy, you are a massive piece of our success. And I just want to thank you for that again, and I'll hand it over to Paul. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, everyone, for having us present your meeting this afternoon. My name is Paul Rolston, and I've been a member of the foundation board for a number of years here. And I'm now in my third year as chair of the foundation board. I'm happy to present this afternoon the final few slides in our presentation. And if you look at this, this is essentially a visual of the last slide Andrew talked about in terms of performance. And when I first heard about the project myself, my impression was that if we can do what we want to do and make the changes and improvements in all the areas that we're planning, we will impact essentially every patient that comes through Stratford General, whether it's through improved technology and communication amongst the staff, improved lab processes that can be done and done more efficiently, delivery of better pharmacy care and more accurate medication provision. And for those families that are touched by cancer, there's hardly a family around these days that hasn't been impacted by cancer in one of their family members. So, next slide, please. This is a testimonial from Dr. Kevin LaFave. Kevin is a member of the general surgery team here at Stratford, and he's also the chief of staff. We've had very good support from the medical community with respect to planning the project and also with respect to financial support of the foundation. However, next slide. We can't do it without you. The city commitment will be the catalyst for our campaign launch. And today, we respectfully ask for $5 million over 10 years in support of our $30 million-plus campaign. Next slide, please. And I just want to thank all of you on behalf of Andrea and Andrew, the other members of the Stratford General Hospital Foundation and staff here at the hospital, and as well, the people of the City of Stratford. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Andrea, Paul, and Andrew, for your presentation. Is there any questions from any member of council at this time? Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I was going to ask, how much time do we have on the hospice? What we've, what we promised the hospice?
Ms. Thompson, or is someone on the line that can represent finance for that question?
Yes, through your worship. I'm sorry, we don't have that information, but we can get it to council.
Counselor Vasilakos.
So I was just going to, I think that this item could be referred to the community grants discussion that we're going to have later this year. And in that way, we will have the information around the hospice grant and where it sits. And at the same time, as referring it to the community grants process, I'd like to refer to staff for them to come back and give us an idea.
Okay, we'll wait for Counselor Vasilakos maybe to come back into the meeting. I think her intent was to ask for the community grants. Would it be possible, I wonder, if we sent it to finance subcommittee though first, so that we could get all the relevant background information and then off from there? Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ritzma, we'll wait another minute just to give Counselor Vasilakos a time to come back in. Is there any other questions from members of the committee? Counselor Henderson?
I just wondered if there's a timeline for the ask. I know you'd be probably reaching out for the community partners, and lots of times when you're doing that, there's a timeline for people recommending things. Like whether they're going to recommend to support the cause or how much they're going to donate. I just wondered if there's a timeline.
Andrea or Andrew, is there one of you that can answer that question?
It's Andrea. I think the most important thing for us at this point in the campaign is the commitment or pledge. What is not as important is the timing of the first payment. We are very cognizant of not only COVID's impact, but also that you have other commitments and that you need to fulfill those commitments first. And we were very fine with waiting for the first payment. What would make a big difference to us is the pledge. Even if the first payment isn't for one year, two year or three years, the pledge will then allow us to go to the rest of the municipalities. It will also be the pace setter for a lot of the larger institutions, financial institutions. Often their first question is, did you have municipal support? So it is the commitment or pledge that truly makes a difference. And the sooner, of course, the, the better in regards to that. But being fully aware that there needs to be lots of consideration and that the city has other commitments that they need to fulfill first.
Counselor Vazalakos, to give you a little bit of an update before you, but we, we know that you'd like to refer to the community grant. We were going to actually send it to finance subcommittee first so they could gain a lot of that information. And the hospital just mentioned that what they'd like to do is look for the pledge and not necessarily the first payment so that they could use it from there. So I'll let you finish your comment, but I just wanted to bring you up to date on that.
So that works if it to back to finance. But one of the things that I'm, I would be interested in is coming up with a system where we would make a pledge up to a certain amount, but with the requirement of it being matched by other municipalities matched or, or what would be a fair match. I think that sometimes those challenges to other municipalities can work well to leverage it and, and, and put a little, you know, a little bit of pressure on them to come up with some funding as well. And so if that could be done through finance, that would be fine as well. And, and I think it's also that idea that we can't really bind future councils on community grants. So, you know, I, I don't mind in principle, but we'd have to look at all the other commitments we have as well because we have a lot coming.
Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, is it only for the Stratford hospital or is it for all like St. Mary's? For, is it for the whole group of hospitals you're talking about this $30 million? Or only specifically for the Stratford hospital?
This is specifically for our Stratford site, absolutely. Counselor Clifford.
All right. So the motion, Counselor Vazalakos.
And understanding that it is just for the Stratford site. I think the last time that the hospital came to us, they had a, a graphic on, on the locate, like who was using the hospital and where they were from and where, where they resided. So some of that information might be useful in coming up with a, a challenge to others.
All right. Would the clerk like to go back over the motion that's on the floors for sure? And then we can call the question.
So through you, your worship, it's my understanding the motion presently on the floor was moved by Counselor Gaffney and seconded by Counselor Ritzma. And that is to refer the request from the Stratford General Hospital Foundation for a commitment of $5 million over 10 years to the Finance and Labor Relations Subcommittee.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Thank you.
And then through your worship, is the intent to adopt or consider a second motion with respect to developing the plan? Looking to Counselor Vazalakos.
I think, yeah, I think I'd like to refer to in that same referral to the Finance and Labor Relations Subcommittee, if staff could prepare a report of what a matching grant program would look like with respect to other, the surrounding municipalities, that would be appreciated.
So that motion is by Counselor Vazalakos and seconded by Counselor Clifford. For those parameters, anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next item. Thank you very much to Andrea, Andrew and Paul.
So through your worship, item 6.2 is a presentation by Infinite Pride. And there is a motion that the presentation by Jennifer Vivian and Eric Charbonneau on behalf of Infinite Pride be heard.
By Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Burbach. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you. You know. Welcome Jennifer and Eric to the meeting. Is there a presentation on PowerPoint?
Good afternoon. We don't have a, we don't, do not have a PowerPoint for this position. So you'll just hear my lovely French accent.
Excellent.
Hoping you can hear me here. So my name is Eric Charbonneau. I am a board member of Infinite Pride Stratford. And I'm joined today on another line by our Chair Jennifer Vivian. And we would both like to thank you for having us. Infinite Pride in collaboration with Kelly Ballantyne, owner of Circle Foods, would like to paint the Pride Progress Flag on the city crosswalk downtown at the intersection of Wellington Street and Downey Street in between 6 Wellington Street and City Hall. We will make sure that the crosswalk has white stripes on either end for visibility and security. We all know the original Rainbow Pride flag well, but in recent years, an updated version known as the Pride Progress Flag has been seen more and more. An image of this flag was included in our written proposal to city council. This flag is the rainbow flag with the addition of the trans colors, white, blue and pink, as well as brown and black representing people of color. The new colors are presented in an arrow shape, which is meant to convey that there is still progress needed for the 2S LGBTQIA+ community, especially when it comes to trans people and people of colors, right? These groups both face, face significant discrimination and we believe that the Pride Progress Flag has its place at the heart of our downtown Stratford. Prior to COVID-19, Infinite Pride approached the city council to complete this project. However, it was, it was put on pause due to the pandemic. In 2021, Kelly Ballantyne had begun a similar initiative on social media, which got the Stratford community really excited. Infinite Pride reached out to Kelly to join forces and we would like to partner to complete this project as quickly as possible. Jessica Elliott from Powerhouse Painting here in town is donating her time and offering to paint the crosswalk for the community of Stratford. Infinite Pride and Kelly Ballantyne will raise funds to pay for the cost of the coating and to pay for the rental of the equipment to remove the current crosswalk. The Progress Flag crosswalk will be coated with a thermoplastic solution sourced by Sherwin-Williams Paint Company through the vendor Gent. After some research, we have decided on this product, the thermoplastic coating, due to its high durability and color retention. Management from Sherwin-Williams in Woodstock is also donating the Xadine, which is a paint thinner and their assistance on this project. We have provided city council with quotes for the coating and machine rental. Should this project be approved by city council, Infinite Pride will create and share a fundraising campaign through our Facebook page, Infinite Pride Stratford. We of course invite the community of Stratford to join our page to see any development on the project. We are here today seeking approval from Stratford City Council to move forward and to approve the location, the design and the product so that we may begin the fundraising process. While we are prepared to fully fund this project, we will be submitting a grant ask through the community grant process and hope that the city of Stratford will also help us financially in this initiative. We believe the 2S LGBTQIA+ community feeling supported by their city and surrounding community is of the utmost importance. And we hope to get your approval to start on this as soon as possible. Thank you for your time. And at this point Jennifer and I would like to welcome any questions that council may, might have.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks Jennifer. Any questions from the present, presenters? Seeing none at this time, Eric, we have this listed on the agenda actually next. So thank you very much for the presentation and council will be making a motion on the next item. Thank you.
Thank you.
So through your worship, item seven, orders of the day. Item 7.1 is a resolution regarding the downtown Pride Crosswalk. And there is a staff recommendation that council approve the installation of the Pride Progress Flag Crosswalk on Wellington Street and Downey Street and that council permit staff to coordinate the temporary road closure and the installation of the proposed crosswalk.
Moved by Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Ingram, discussion. Counselor Gaffney, then Counselor Clifford.
I guess the only question I have is staff has not looked at the material that's going to be used and there's no concerns about, you know, if it's wet, if it's, it's viscosity might be a sliding problem or anything.
Yes, through your worship, the, the material that's being proposed is what we used all over our place for our roads and typically used for our crosswalks. So it's a standard item material. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is there like a timeline on this? Is it like forever or for one year, two years?
Madam clerk, do you have anything in the request or Mr. Craneclaw?
Sure, through your worship. This type of material typically lasts about three to five years before it starts to fade, at which time I've mentioned to Infinite Pride as well as Kelly Ballantyne that they can come to the IDS department or council to request that it be refreshing to maintain its look.
Thank you. Any other questions? It has been moved and seconded, item 7.1. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Thank you.
Item 7.2 is a resolution regarding the Lakeside Drive road closure recommendation. And there is a staff recommendation that council approve the temporary road closure of Lakeside Drive from Front Street to Morens Drive on weekends from Friday afternoons until Monday morning, starting July 30th and terminating September 7th, 2021. That council approved the temporary road closure of eastbound traffic on Lakeside Drive East of Waterloo Street to Morens Drive on weekends from Friday afternoons until Monday mornings, starting July 30th and terminating September 7th. And that council approved staff to make adjustments to the temporary road closures on Lakeside Drive between Queen Street and Waterloo Street.
Moved by Counselor Vazalakos, your second, Counselor Burbach, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you.
Item 7.3 is a resolution regarding the Romeo and the Lone Road widening. And there is a staff recommendation that the corporation of the city of Stratford accept parts one and two on Plan 44R-5890 as public highway and declare it as forming part of Romeo Street North. And that the corporation of the city of Stratford accepts part two and three on Plan 44R-5877 as public highway and dedicated as forming part of the Lone Avenue.
Counselor Ingram is moving, Counselor Burbach seconding, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried.
Item 7.4 is a resolution regarding the 2018 to 2022 strategic priorities, key performance indicators, update and implementation. And there is a staff recommendation that the key performance indicator update and implementation report first and second quarter 2021 be received as information.
Moved by Counselor Bunting, seconded by Counselor Burbach, discussion. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. Under the heading of Mobility, Accessibility and Design Excellence, the key performance indicator.
Danielle, can you turn your mic up just a bit, please, or move your headphone down? Thanks.
Is that better?
That's great. Thanks.
Okay. Under Mobility, Accessibility and Design Excellence, the key performance indicator was the number of transit riders. And I'm wondering if in conjunction with the number of riders, we could also look at the number of new trails created and accessibility options provided in conjunction with those transit riders. I think that's maybe a better key performance indicator as to how we're doing overall because it, it's not just based on the transit ridership.
Sure. Through your worship, so we would like to start doing something to track trail and bike usage. We just don't have the infrastructure in place at this time. We do have some information included in the report about the work that's being done through the accessibility or the accessibility advisory committee on that. And we are looking at options for including trail counters in the next report to bring that data forward. As far as accessibility options, we can look at some options for bringing some of that data forward if available.
Thank you. And I think my comment about the number of trails were, were more along the lines of kilometers created or trails created, not necessarily just the, the count, the ridership count. I think, I think the ridership count is great. But what are we as the city actually doing to create these trails and to promote them and to ensure design excellence on these systems that we're creating for these people to use? So user ship is, is one thing, but from our perspective, designing and creating and having to provide them is maybe a, a key performance indicator versus just the users.
Sure. Through your worship, we're happy to take that suggestion back.
Thank you. Counselor Vazalakos.
And further to that, I think then the creation of the report card that the active transportation advisory committee is creating helps with respect to that because it does follow things like trails and, and connections made and, and, and all of that. The other part of it though too is the share the road. We'll mention maybe a KPI could be something like working towards higher levels. And so part of, you know, I, I think a good KPI that is measurable with the right lines and trying for, for, for higher levels. And there was a discussion at, at ATAC, Active Transportation Advisory Committee about having some kind of public sort of display of what level we're at. They do. Those activities into these KPIs.
Okay. Ms. Potter, do you have any feedback to that?
Sure. We're, we're happy to take those suggestions back and, and worked to integrate those into the report.
Thank you. All right. The motion on the floor is made. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried.
Item 7.5 is a resolution regarding the service delivery review update and implementation plan. And there is a staff recommendation that the service delivery review update for July 2021 be received as information.
Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Vazalakos, discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried.
Item 7.6 is a resolution regarding the concrete sidewalk installation tender award for contract T 2021-18. And there is a staff recommendation that the concrete sidewalk installation contract be awarded to Nicholson Concrete at a total price of $135,792.10, including HST, and that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
By Counselor Beatty and seconded by Counselor Ritzma, discussion. Counselor Henderson.
I just wanted to say I'm glad to see this coming forward. It's going to make it much easier to get to the bus stop on West Gore and also to get into the hospital from that side. Because it's a sidewalk then, eventually we'll hopefully have one on Cambia side too. And then one on, on Martin Street will be welcome because once that missing link is put in, people will actually be able to walk all the way from Vivian Street downtown, out on Terrell Street to Romeo Street, all the way up Romeo Street to Vivian again. There'll be a continuous loop. So it'll make a huge walking block for, for people to get around our city. Thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Anything further? If not, all. If not, all in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item seven point seven is a resolution regarding the Cooper Block process to restart community hub project. And there is a staff recommendation that the city of Stratford confirmed the revitalization strategy for the Cooper Block presented in the two thousand and eighteen Grand Trunk Community Hub Master Plan. And that staff need necessary reconstruction activities within the historic stream locomotive maintenance building, including the items listed on the agenda. And it's my understanding there is a presentation for this item.
Thank you, an alternative, I believe, to the CEO.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I'm pleased to be joined in in this presentation this afternoon by Jim Archwell, who has been assisting us with preparing the the report, Stephanie Potter and Taylor Crinklaw, as well as Jonathan Deweard as as leads on on this particular refresh project. So I have a brief PowerPoint presentation to just present this afternoon. So I am pleased to present to council this report of a high level action plan and recommended next steps to restart the community hub process. The hub is to be located within a portion of the former Cooper Building. This project was paused by the city during COVID and the declared emergency. And so it is time now to continue moving forward and draw on the resiliency within this community for the the Grand Trunk Master Plan. And the next steps. Before I cover the next steps being recommended in the report, I would like to take a moment to review with you the Grand Trunk Master Plan and where we are. Please note that the master plan and the related documents continue to be posted to the the city's website. So this slide of the building today is a photo taken of the the structure. Most people are very familiar with the building and so and the history, which has been well documented and preserved. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but just wanted to start off with this visual. Next slide, please. So the master plan, the purpose of the Grand Trunk Master Plan is to provide the flexible framework for reinvestment into the site. It is intended to provide a sense of place and a critical mass of activity regarding learning, recreation, living and employment. This, of course, will be done in partnerships. The master plan represents the key milestone for the site, and it was adopted by Stratford City Council in two thousand and eighteen. Next slide, please. And just to to review the key elements. This slide shows the eleven key elements. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I am pleased to give an update with respect to item five, which is the bus terminal. So the transit hub has been completed and is operational for Stratford Public Transit. And in two thousand and twenty, during the pandemic, two community transportation pilot projects were launched by Stratford, North Perth and St. Mary's and the county of Perth. And the transit terminal is used by these two pilot projects for the for riders transferring between the routes between Stratford, St. Mary's, North Perth, Perth County, Kitchener and London. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the guiding principles from the plan that emerged from the work and the public input provided in creating the a grand trunk framework. And so now on to next steps and the report. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this report, as I said, is to provide a high level review and to seek council direction. So we are recommending a first phase of an implementation strategy. And this is taken from the report and the highlights are here. While previous technical reports identified that adaptive reuse is possible, there are several critical tasks that remain to be completed before the detailed design on the hub can proceed. This report before council today outlines the first phase of that implementation strategy for the rest of this year and into next year. And if you refer to the the report, these these first steps are dealing with the leaking roof. So we are recommending the complete removal of the leaking roof over the historic steel trusses, including removal and storage of the historic skylights, removal and storage of the original wooden roof planks, removal and disposal of all asbestos containing felt and tar roofing. Then cleaning, repair, priming of the historic steel trusses in the proposed community hub area and the bracing and stabilization of all salvageable trusses. Because we don't know at this point what the complete use of the the facility will be. Next slide, please. So these actions will eliminate the environmental liability of the asbestos roofing over the trusses. It will eliminate the safety concerns from the leaking falling roof material. It will preserve the skylights and wooden planks for future assessment. It will completely repair and restore the steel trusses in the community hub area. And it will brace and stabilize all other salvageable trusses. And just as noted in the report, there's approximately one hundred thousand square feet of roofing material to be removed. But as noted in the plan, with respect to the the skylights and the wood planks, the intent is when we take those down, it will be to assess and preserve those for future consideration. We don't have a plan for them yet, but we will be preserving those. Next slide, please. So in completing these steps, it will allow council to gather more information and and have more information so that they can make more decisions with respect to the the site. Completing these actions in early two thousand and twenty two, which is the timeframe, will have a significant reduction in the project unknowns. There will be significant reduction in the environmental and safety liabilities associated with the structure at this time. It will also create structural certainty for the architectural design of the community hub. And when it will improve the clarity of the future project costs. I know that council is always very concerned about the cost. And so taking these steps will allow us to help to clarify what those future costs will be. I will say that this work on the roof that we are proposing needs to be done regardless. The the safety of it is is an issue. It has been identified by our consulting engineers. They have a plan to to deal with it. But this work, regardless of how long it will take to complete the the reuse of the entire building or a portion of the building or portions of the building, this roof work does need to be done regardless. Next slides, please. So for the next steps in the twenty two, in two thousand and twenty two, subject to council direction. If these steps are undertaken, then we are planning to come back with a further report. Seeking council direction on proceeding to architectural design of the community hub. Confirmation of the electrical and other site servicing needs both short and long term. Development of an onsite road network and services, again, short and long term. Removal of the damaged and unsuitable buildings and assessment of the historic skylights and roof planks. So before I get to the the recommendations, just wanted to talk a little bit about the next steps. If we have council approval to move forward this fall, we will be working with our engineers on developing a a tender for the repair and restoring the those street steel trusses in the community hub area. Brace and stabilizing all of the salvageable steel trusses and removing of the asbestos and the tar roofing materials. This is a strategic step that we're taking. The trusses in the community hub area will be with the paint being removed, they will be primed to preserve them in that area only. But again, we're being very strategic in the work that we're proposing because of cost containment. But also, we don't have a a design yet or intended use for the entirety of the building. So we are staging this project. The the details of the work that we're proposing to do is outlined in the report. And then moving to the the next slide, please. So this is again the the before site, you're familiar with this, and the next slide, please, is the after with respect to the community hub. So the staff recommendations are noted in your in the report with the agenda. And I would be pleased to to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about, you talked about a paint. I I heard that there was lead paint all like in the building. Are we planning on on removing the lead paint in the in the hub area or not?
So through you worship, can I just ask for clarification? We do know that there is lead paint on the steel trusses. So in answer to your question, again, we're being strategic in it. So with respect to the steel trusses for the particular area of the hub, the steel trusses will be cleaned to remove all paint, rust and any other previous coatings. Once completely cleaned and inspected, pearlands will be replaced and necessary minor repairs undertaken. The restored trusses will then be sprayed with a primer coat of paint. Typically, this is reddish brown in color and the bracing embrace pending installation of a new roof in the future. The primed steel surfaces can be exposed for at least three to five years without any significant deterioration of the steel. And once a final decision on the design of the hub building is reached and construction is underway, trusses will receive a final coat of paint in the color chosen. With respect to the other areas of the building, not including the the hub, it is proposed that the remainder of the historic steel trusses would be braced following removal of the leaking roof material. All the existing paint will remain in place. Bracing will prevent twisting or other movement of the structure, which could damage the trusses following removal of the leaking remove roof. Removing the roof will not significantly affect the condition of the trusses. As long as the rusted surfaces are not cleaned, that rust layer actually protects the underlying steel from further corrosion. In areas of leaking and saturated roof felt, removal of the saturated felt will reduce ongoing corrosion. And the trusses are very heavy duty. And during the time period expected for decision making on the rest of the building, which could take anywhere from five to ten years, bracing of those trusses, as now proposed, will maintain the structural integrity of the building. Once a final decision is made, cleaning and repairs will be required, similar to what is currently proposed to the hub area.
Any questions, councillor Ingram?
Thank you. I have a couple. The first one is, are we paying for storage of those skylights and the roof planks? And if so, where are they being stored?
Through you, your worship. The plan is to, when they to take them down carefully and they will be assessed and stored in what we call the annex building at the Cooper Site. So it will be on site. It is a covered area and can be controlled that way until a decision is made as to whether we're able to reincorporate some of those elements back into the adaptive reuse.
Thank you. And then my next questions speak to the first part of the staff recommendation, which is the confirmation of the revitalization strategy for the Cooper Block. So in the in the report, it mentioned that the university was reconsidering their their expansion plans. Are they still planning to expand within the community hub? Do we do we have, have we had any firm conversations with them?
Through you, your worship. We have had conversations with the Stratford Y, which is now has gone through an amalgamation with the the university. I'm going to be having those conversations starting tomorrow. We have also spoken with the Chair of Heritage Stratford and the Chair of the local Architectural Conservancy of Ontario to advise them of our our plans for this particular work. But we know that there will be a lot of consultation moving forward. But I I do need to advise council that the roof structure is the critical issue before council. It needs to be dealt with. It has been three years since the last preliminary structural analysis was done. This project was paused because of COVID, but we we are really dealing with the 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 roof structure here. But we know that there has to be a lot of consultation and time for both the Y and the the university and our other partners to assess their their ongoing commitment to this project.
So if I may follow up, then the first part of the staff recommendation is that the city of Stratford confirmed the revitalization strategy for the Cooper Block presented in two thousand and eighteen Grand Trunk Community Hub Master Plan. To me, that that is including the community partners as well as the master plan. The second part of that recommendation speaks to the trusses and the construction activity. And so I think my my questions regarding the community partners. You know, I think I think they stand because they they speak to that first part of the recommendation. And so your conversations with the university have not yet begun. It's my understanding that the YMCA is no longer interested in expanding as part of the community hub. And has that been part of your conversations as well?
I can say that in the conversation that I had today, that was not the message I received. Certainly, they have gone through an amalgamation. And do they do need to discuss this with their their new board? But that was not the message I heard today.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Any further, councillor Ritzman?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So I'm I'm pleased that this items before council again. And 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 hopefully with this movement, then perhaps will be more shovel ready for hopefully future federal and and provincial support and funding. So having said that, I would move the staff recommendation.
Councillor Henderson, you're seconding then. Any further discussion? Councillor Burbak?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited to see this coming forward again as well. And I was just wondering, a couple of people have reached out to me wondering about the legal situation with the Cooper Site. I'm wondering if we could get an update on that.
Certainly, and through you, your worship. Yes, so with respect to the the legal matters, so council, we did finish up the five week LPAT hearing on June the eleventh, and we are waiting for the the board's decision regarding compensation for the expropriation. The the compensation was the sole issue at that LPAT hearing. A decision was reserved by the the board member, and we are hopeful for a decision by the end of this year. With respect to the the compensation.
Anything further? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried.
So through your worship, item seven point eight is a resolution regarding the community hub fundraising. And there is a staff recommendation that the city of Stratford prepare and issue a request for proposals to retain a fundraising campaign manager for the Grand Trunk Community Hub. And that acceptance of this proposal be subject to council approval as part of the two thousand and twenty two budget deliberation.
Anderson? You're moving that? Is there a second? Councillor Burbak, discussion. Councillor Ingram, councillor Clifford, councillor Vazalakos, councillor Ingram, or sorry, Henderson.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions about how this contract with the fundraising consultant might be structured. And I'm wondering, because we we haven't really gone back to the community in the last little while, if there's less than, you know, fifty percent of the community who's showing a level of support for the community hub, is is there, you know, does that stop this contract dead? Do we continue on? Is there a monetary goal that needs to be reached during Is there a monetary goal that needs to be reached during Phase One? And is it, you know, 50% of the project? And, you know, usually during these kinds of large capital fundraising campaigns, there's a percentage of the project that needs to be met in terms of your fundraising goal before you start to move publicly. So I'm wondering if we have any of those pieces.
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Ingram. So these are all items that will be built into the the scope of the work. We I we don't have specific information and even what council's goal or what council's commitment itself for the city would be, but the 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 fundraising campaign. Person, this will be their work that they will be doing in consultation with a committee to scope out the feasibility. What can the city and and the community reasonably fundraise? They'll also take into consideration other fundraising campaigns that are going on. But this will all be structured. There will be reports back to council for further council direction with respect to this. But a lot of this will be done during the feasibility and analysis. And if there is not an appetite, we'll be coming back to council to to let council know here's realistic with the way the the economy is on that. So this will be, as I said, in consultation with council and that council's direction.
Thank you. And and just so that I'm clear, that would be built into.
Clifford, you were next.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have I have some I have some concerns too that we're we're without counsel knowing exactly what, like we talk about the hub, we talk about the Y, the YMCA, the university. I I think we're a bit premature to talk about a fundraising campaign without how much the city of Stratford is going to put into it, if and when we can get some help from the province and Ottawa. So I I'm just afraid we'll talk about it prematurely. And it it won't. I think to have the public have real interest, you have to have a real plan. And so I'm just, I'm concerned about that we're doing this premature.
Ms. Thompson, do you mean?
Thank you, your worship. We feel that, sorry, it is recommended that if we are going to undertake a fundraising campaign and it you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There needs to be a an architectural design of what the hub will look like as part of that fundraising campaign so that people are aware this is what it's going to look like. So we know that there is a lot of work to be done during the the different phases of the campaign. We know that we will be in partnership and having those discussions with the university as well as the Y to get the vision and the the design of the of the of the building. This work is needed and is it becomes the focus of the the campaign, but it is not going to be happening right away. But we need to assess, have an initial assessment of what is capable within the community for fundraising. And then starting the architectural design work of the facility as part of this, so that there is a successful launch of the campaign that we have some foundation money from the city. We know that we already have approximately $5 million of the city set aside from the fairgrounds property sale as well as the Kiwanis Community Center. So we do have some foundation money there as the the start, which will also be critical to this. But as I said, we we do need to assess the the to assess the feasibility of this, and we need a consultant to help us. This is a lot of work involved with all of the different aspects to the campaign.
Right, Counselor Vaz.
So just as a bit of a follow up to that, my apologies, my internet is miserable today and so I'm breaking up and warply and I apologize. My my question is around, I'm assuming that this campaign feasibility work will be not be for another few months while you continue to have the conversations with the Y and the university and and get some preliminary architectural drawings done. So that then whoever is hired, the consultant will have something to to base their initial feasibility setting on. And if that's the case, will part of what the feasibility study be would be a sort of revisiting with the public of their sort of priorities for that master plan? What parts of it are going to be more meaningful for fundraising, what parts are not, and would that actually help move forward on the different components of the master plan in terms of of how much appetite or interest there is in fundraising for different components?
Through you, your worship, yes. As as part of the feasibility and the the strategy with the campaign, it will be done in phases. There will be certain areas, you know, where where the fundraising will be selected and presented to, especially with the Active Adults Center. I know that there will be a lot of interest in what services, what facilities, what that space will look like for the users. So again, there must be public consultation as we get more into the details. At this point, you know, it's it's difficult to have a focus for what it's actually going to look like. So as as part of the architectural design, there will need to be further public consultation. And we understand that there will probably be some additional requests made at that time, which will be brought back to council for your consideration. But this is start, this is the excitement starting with it. We're starting, we want to get started. And we're hoping that this will build momentum as as the work proceeds and people can actually now start to visualize the space, how it could possibly be used. It has been, you know, a few years now since we've had the Grand Trunk Master Plan. And again, we just, we know that there will be further consultation. But this is the the exciting part now is we're starting to see this come to come to life.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Burbank.
I I think it's important that we start a fundraiser. I believe I made the motion a couple of years ago that we start the fundraising. So when the province and the federal government are looking, they can see the citizens of Stratford or the residents of Stratford are very interested in getting this going and starting, and they can see the fundraising is starting. And the plans are going forward. And I have a few concerns about the fact that I thought we already had done all our groundwork. We had the open houses, we had the public consultation, we had drawings, not the true architect ones drawn up the concept so that we would be able to move quickly forward if we get the grant. So what I'm sort of hearing today is it sounds more like this could take years. So if we apply for grant money, what would happen? How will that work then? Can we speed it up like? And my other part of my question is, I wasn't on council when they started the fundraising for the Rotary Complex. How far ahead on that did they start fundraising for that? And I know it continued after it was built, because I heard comments from people that say fundraising should always start before you start building because you really build the momentum. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, that's just comments. So that's, if you can help me out with that, I'd appreciate it.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. I'm sorry, I don't have the information with respect to the Rotary Complex fundraising. We can get that information for you. With respect to the the campaign. As I said, it is one of like, there's a lot of moving parts to this because we still have the site servicing, but this is a critical part to it. We know that we will continue to be seeking federal and provincial funding. We were not successful with our previous application. But by doing the the work on the roof and starting to get the the structure more shovel ready, we may be more more eligible for some of the government funding. You will have noticed that there are a number of community hub grant applications that the province has announced in in recent weeks. And so we want to move our project along to be shovel ready so that we can apply for those particular types of of grants.
If I could, Counselor Ritzman, you might be able to speak to it because you were co-chair of the fundraising campaign. But if I'm not mistaken, it started almost two years before facility and during the construction over you.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and and I I would echo those thoughts that it it began before and then it continued on and then was in conjunction with the the final footprint planning and and design work. You know, it's always ideal that maybe you have the complete plan set, but I think council, as Counselor Henderson has has talked about, we've we've discussed this project at length and and I believe there is a good appetite from council and and from our citizens and and also I think we have some key stakeholders that I I think as much as I'd like to see some more firm plans, I I think it'd be wise to begin that that fundraising piece. So I would support and and to that end, maybe I would like to move the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Burbank. I believe your hand is next.
Thank you. Yeah, I I'm also in support of moving ahead with this, at least planning for fundraising. But the thought occurred to me that we are also approving a marketing policy through community services for asset, marketing assets and naming rights and so on. So whatever is going to happen with this planning needs to sort of dovetail with the the policies that we're creating. So and I'm not sure if maybe it's best to possibly either have the consultants work together or have a the same consultant do that work so that we're not repeating ourselves or overlapping that type of work.
I think what staff can do is coordinate their discussion around that, since one RFP is already been let's. Counselor Henderson.
Well, I don't know if this is premature, but could we actually have a link on the website on the Cooper site that anybody that wants to start a monthly donation or a yearly donation or whatever could actually start to donate money, like we've got around $5 million in the fund now. And then, you know, it may be a slower build, although maybe not, maybe a lot of people will get rid on this and you know, be part of that before we actually hire a campaign manager, et cetera.
Ms. Thompson, do you have something? And then I see Counselor Ritz.
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Henderson. Yes, certainly. Once we have direction of council, we can put some information on on our website and encourage the public to to reach out to us as to how they can donate now.
Counselor Ritzman.
Yeah, and and I like the enthusiasm around that concept, but but with fundraising, you have to be careful that you ask it in a in a good, in a good fashion, appropriate fashion, so that you don't miss out on a on maybe a donor giving substantially more if it's a well-coordinated campaign. So as much as I'd love to see it out there, people might say, okay, I I donated, I gave him my $50. You know, if we're going to go through the work of having a a company chair or come up with a a plan for this campaign, which is going to be significant money, I think it'd be wise, this is just my opinion, to 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 wait on on going to the public at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson.
Well, Counselor Ritzma, I have seen you've been so successful at many fundraisers in our city. From your church to United Way to Shelter Lake, to name a few. So if you feel that's the best way, we're going with that.
Thank you for your kind words, Counselor Henderson. So we have a mover for the recommendation under item 7.8. Is there a second? Counselor Henderson.
Through you, your worship. I did have recorded that Counselor Henderson moved the original motion and Counselor Burbank seconded it. What has been moved and seconded.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. So Counselor Ritzman, you can you can just chair the campaign instead. All right. Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you.
So through your worship, item 7.9 is a resolution regarding the Service System Manager Request for Qualification Employment Services Ontario Transformation. And there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Service System Manager Request for Qualification Employment Services Ontario Transformation be received for information.
Mover for such, Counselor Bunting, Counselor Vazalakos seconding discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? That's carried.
Item 710 is correspondence regarding an Ontario Energy Board notice. Outlined on your agenda, Enbridge Gas Inc. has applied to the Ontario Energy Board to raise its natural gas rates effective January 1st, 2022, based on a rate setting framework and other adjustments previously approved by the Ontario Energy Board for the period of 2019 to 2023. And the full application is available in the clerk's office for viewing by appointment, and this was provided for the information of council.
Thank you.
Turning to your agenda, item 7.11 is an award of proposal. And there is a motion that council approve an amendment to the 2021 Fire Capital Budget to include $1,864,174 for the purchase of the aerial platform tower fire apparatus. The council approved the purchase through long-term debt financing at the appropriate time as determined by the Director of Corporate Services in consultation with the Chief Administrative Officer. And that's the proposal for the supply and delivery of a 2020 or newer 100-foot tandem axle mid-mount aerial platform tower fire apparatus from RFP-2021-21 be awarded to Commercial Emergency Equipment Co. at a total cost of $2,070,080, and that includes HFT.
Thank you. So your mover. Just, Counselor Vazalakos, are you moving or wanting to speak to it? Moving. Thank you, Counselor Henderson. You're seconding that recommendation. Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Clifford.
I I read the report. Do we have anything in in anything in reserves for that truck at all? I know we've put other things in reserve, so I was, I'd asked to see if we have anything in our reserve fund for that truck.
All right, through the chair. Right now, we don't have enough reserves to cover 1.8 million. We do have some reserves where we could allot a couple of hundred thousand. But at the moment, we're trying to build that back up because we have another vehicle to replace after 2027. So we're hoping to fully finance the the engine tubes replacement once it hits the 2020 mark or the 20-year mark and that point after. And only debt, long-term debt finance, the most expensive vehicle in the fleet, which is this one. I hope that answers your question.
Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I have real difficulty reconciling $2 million and single source pricing. Is there an explanation for the people out there in Rogers Land to make to make us all understand why it was a single source price?
Yes, absolutely. Through through your worship. So it it wasn't a single source or sole sourcing, it was a matter of one proposal. The way this was laid out, the committee put together quite a few specifications. We had to design a vehicle that would meet the next 30 years of of response and citizens' needs and the unique features within the city of Stratford. And after much research and visiting multiple fire departments all over Ontario, which COVID-19 prevented, presented quite a few challenges for, we found all the best practices we could, but not pertaining to any single manufacturer. We had to take bits and pieces from many different types of vehicles to try and build a vehicle that would be specific to the needs of the city of Stratford. And what came out of that was And what came out of that was an extensive. Amount of specifications to try and to address that because we didn't want to take. A standard vehicle and hope that we can make the best of it for thirty years. And within that specification, we had to put other best practices in that came from that are being utilized around Ontario. One specific was we, anybody that was going to make a proposal. Had to have the capability to provide servicing and warranty servicing within two hundred kilometers of the city of Stratford. That right there is key, right now, if we didn't put that in. A vehicle that required warranty work or servicing and they didn't have service capability within. Say two hundred kilometers or two to three hours from the city. That vehicle would be taken out of service long term, would be towed or flatbed to some other part of the province or even out of province. And we would be without a key piece of equipment for a long length of time. So by putting in the two hundred kilometers, which we see more and more of now, a distance in there for servicing. That eliminated quite a few manufacturers, but it still left four within our within that two hundred kilometers. And the fifth one that is out of province with a subcontract within that within our region to do servicing. Which also eliminated some manufacturers, the fact that that needs assessment that was conducted by our committee. It actually, though we required a mid-mount. And that mid-mount type of apparatus, not everybody provides or manufactures a mid-mount aerial with a bucket. And that was also very key for us, we have a unique feature in tight quarters like in the downtown core. We have unique features of the woodland towers, but we need a bucket to do rescue off the balconies with people that may have accessibility needs. Only and we also have unique features that we need to place that bucket on the ground. To whether it's to offload casualties or dress areas down near waters or steep embankments, we have quite a few steep embankments. At the bottom of Alone and Lord Avenue, where if we have a bucket that can actually lower down below that grade. Is a great assistance to us for the safety of the firefighters and conducting rescue operations. So by putting in that mid-mount, we unfortunately, because not everybody could provide a mid-mount. So when we put all of this together, what came key to us is that we realized. We may be restricting the amount of people that may be able to bid. So on the RFP process, on the document itself, on the final column on the right-hand side. Was the capability of every single bidder or proposer to be able to recommend. A variant or provide an alternative to every single line of specification that we're asking. So if they didn't have exactly what we're looking for, every vehicle in the fire service is fully customizable by any manufacturer. Every aspect of it from bumper to bumper can be can be can be customized. So when we're asking for. The capabilities to be able to hold a wheelchair in the bucket, we want to be able to have a Stokes basket mounted near the top of the platform. Baskets or compartments to hold roof saws, rescue saws. We want to be able to have ladders at the top, so we can hook the ladder onto the bucket and climb down off the ladder if it's at an extreme height onto a roof. We want anchor points onto that bucket so we could anchor off with ropes, safety ropes onto our firefighters. When they step onto a roof and if that roof collapses, burns through, our firefighters aren't going to fall through into a fire and possibly have a fatality in their hands. All of these aspects, we put in these specifications, some manufacturers may have may have felt that we've asked too much. And but these, after extensive research and visiting so many fire departments. That have had these type of vehicles for the last ten years, we went through all the good and bad, we talked to the users of the vehicles. We had them identify if they were going to build this vehicle again, what would be important to them, what would they do differently? And after we did all of this, and I really got to thank. The 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 staff that volunteered to be on this committee, which I'll do at the end of end of this, but. They did so much research to make sure we tried to stay under the two million that we talked, discussed that we were approved for at the beginning of the budget. We did everything we could to during these challenging times of COVID, I mean, the economy is not the best. We wanted to make sure we get the best value for our dollar, but to meet the needs of the city for the next thirty years to anticipate. Cities' growth and firefighter safety and how many more buildings are we going to have with balconies, how many other. Buildings or establishments like woodland towers we're going to have there, there could be people with accessibility needs on multiple stories. We had to take all that into account, and what we came up with, with those over thirteen hundred lines of specifications. We realized we were going for designing a unicorn vehicle. To try and get a vehicle from like that under two million, we knew it was going to be a challenge, but we had to try. Because we didn't want just a stock standard vehicle to make do with for the next thirty years, because we do have unique features. We do have tight areas in the core, tight areas of woodland towers, we have low hanging, we got rail bridges that we have to go under. We didn't want the vehicle to be too low, we have challenges to make sure it's going to fit in just in our in our fire stations. So when we put all of that together, we found, and I got to thank, give a thanks here to the. Experience and expertise of our fleet manager. We typically go out for a new vehicle purchase, we normally put the year of what we're going to receive the vehicle as the year, so we would have said. We we're looking for a proposal for a two thousand and twenty-two. On aerial, but the experience of our fleet manager, he said, you know what? Brent Ridcraft said, if we specify two thousand and twenty or newer, give it an extra year, we're in two thousand and twenty-one. There is the possibility that there could be a stock vehicle that are somewhere in North America that a company, it may meet our needs. Or close to our needs, or just may need some some type of modification to it. That we might be able to get a cheaper price on it, but still be able to get what we're looking for. So when we put all of that together, councillor Gaffney, I'm sorry if this is taking so long in explanation, but. We put all that together for this unicorn vehicle we're hoping to get. There was one manufacturer that still had a vehicle sitting in stock in Texas. Where it's still at the factory that they're able to take back into the factory and make a few modifications for. So. That is the explanation of why we only had one proposal is because within that that budget. Or within our ass and so many ass. To this vehicle, many manufacturers weren't willing to go that far, knowing they probably couldn't do it within a reasonable price.
Thank you for. That statement, councillor Gaffney.
Yes, thank you, that was a very informative and well said. I'd like to suggest that. That would have been, that would have been helpful to have been included in the report. The visual presentations. Were not really telling the story, but you just did tell the story, so. So thank you very much for take taking taking the time and presenting that to us, chief.
Councillor Ritzma.
So through you, your worship, chief, please extend my. Thanks or council's thanks to the the committee that's done the extensive research, I have a couple of questions, but and I'll start with. If we go ahead with a vehicle of this nature. What about the storage, is it, does it fit existing storage that we have for our, you know, at our disposal currently?
Through your worship, so do you mean storage of, storage on the vehicle or storage in the fire departments?
Yes, of the vehicle.
Okay, so what's the best part about these vehicles is that it's not a one-trick pony, and I'm going to say it that way because. Most aerial devices, whether it's a bucket or doesn't have a bucket, I'll say in plain language. It's typically that's it's a it's only used for that. It can spray water out the tip and you can only use the the bucket for whatever you're going to use it for. This vehicle not only has more storage capabilities on it, but it's also capable of being used as a frontline pump. It has attack lines, full capabilities, just like any of the other two engines, engine one and engine two. So if our other vehicles, engines are pumpers, I'll put it that way, are out of service for whatever needs to be done to it. This aerial can now be brought into full service as an actual pump as well. So everything that goes into these compartments, we can have the same stuff in those compartments on this vehicle as we do as our frontline engines. But also now it can be used as a pumper or as a rescue device.
Councillor Gaffney.
I could be wrong, I I think Martin may have been also been asking. But I'll go ahead and ask it for my own information, so this new truck is going to fit inside the buildings. You know, inside the two halls or wherever you're going to, whichever hall you're going to have it at.
Through your worship, absolutely, so the first, the first part of any part of this process of building vehicles is measurements. So make sure it'll fit within the doors without pulling the mirrors in and making sure it'll fit in full length. Without having to reconfigure everything, and that's always done at the beginning and is done about five more times during the process.
Yes, in my business, it was always measured twice, cut once, thanks, chief.
Anything further? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Through your worship, may may I, since I didn't get a chance to do it on the break, may I send out a thank you to the members of the committee publicly?
Sure.
I I would like to recognize the members of the committee that volunteered that did many, many hours of research throughout all of the province with the manufacturers. Firefighter Jake Jenkins, firefighter Derek Robertson, firefighter Corey Keller, firefighter Mike Handley. Firefighter Mike Lakatsko, our director of training, Chris Beeler. Our fleet manager Brent Ridcraft and deputy fire chief Neil Anderson, I think it's very important that they be acknowledged twelve and three and they did a wonderful job. With this to stay at the end, over a hundred thousand dollars under budget, that was previously predetermined by council to. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your worship, returning back to your agenda, item eight is business, which previous notice has been given and there was none scheduled. And item nine is a report of standing committee. And item nine point one is a report of the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee, and there are four items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point one point one is the Gwelph Street No Parking Review. Item nine point one point two is the Stratford Lampell Public Input Invited June two thousand and twenty-one. Item nine point one point three is the Durkin Street renaming request, and item nine point one point four is the adoption of the city of Stratford's facility and accessibility design manual.
Thank you, that report is being moved by councillor Vazalacos and seconded by councillor Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item nine point two is report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there are five items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point two point one is the tax relief under section three fifty-seven, one subsection D point one sickness or extreme poverty. Item nine point two point two, the purchasing policy exemption request for the Queen Street Trunk Storm sewer project. Item nine point two point three and item nine point two point four do relate to the two thousand and twenty treasurer's statements for development charge and cash in lieu of Parkland Reserve Fund. And item nine point two point five is the proposed two thousand and twenty-two budget schedule and process.
By councillor Gaffney, seconded by councillor Bunting, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item ten is notice of intent, and item ten point one is notice of intent to adopt a bylaw to change the name of Durkin Street to Wright Boulevard. And notice is hereby given that council of the corporation of the city of Stratford is considering a bylaw to change the name of Durkin Street in the city of Stratford. The authority for changing the names of streets is found in bylaw forty-seven dash two thousand and eight and the municipal act two thousand and one. The proposed bylaw would have the following effect, the entire length of Durkin Street from Wright Boulevard to Line twenty-nine is to be renamed Wright Boulevard. A map showing the affected street is available from the clerk's office located at City Hall. And city council will consider the bylaw of the August ninth, two thousand and twenty-one regular council meeting to be held at three P M electronically via Zoom. And comment about the proposed street name change can be made in writing and must be submitted by Tuesday, August third to the city clerk. And there is information on the agenda about where those comments can be submitted. Moving to item eleven, reading up the bylaws, there are six bylaws listed on the agenda along with the two addenda bylaws, and those are. As follows, so item eleven point one is to amend the traffic and parking bylaw one five nine dash two thousand and eight. Item eleven point two is to accept the tender for the concrete sidewalk insulation. Item eleven point three is to accept conveyance of parts one and two on plan forty-four R dash fifty-eight ninety. Item eleven point four is the dedication of parts one and two on plan forty-four R dash fifty-eight ninety as public highway. And well, eleven point five is to accept conveyance of parts two and three on plan forty-four R dash fifty-eight seventy-seven. And I have eleven point six is the dedication of parts two and three on plan forty-four R dash fifty-eight seventy-seven as public highway. And turning to your addendums, there is an addenda bylaw which is draft by law eleven point nine, which is to accept the proposal for the supply and delivery of the aerial platform tower fire apparatus. And item eleven ten is the execution of a collective agreement with local union six thirty-six of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW Water Division. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council presence.
Moved by councillor Henderson and councillor Beatty, that they be taken collectively, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. So we'll go to first and second reading of the bylaws, councillor Vazalacos and councillor Bunting, discussion. Councillor Gaffney. I'm sorry, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried, third and final reading of the bylaws, councillor Gaffney and councillor Clifford, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item twelve is the consent agenda, are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Councillor Burbak.
I'd like us to consider CA two thousand and twenty-one, one oh three, resolution from the city of Mississauga, calling on the government of Canada. To terminate its appeal of the two thousand and nineteen Human Rights Tribe General Ruling with respect to compensation to First Nations children and their families.
Seconded for that, councillor Vazalacos, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried, thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda, councillor Vazalacos?
Um, yeah, I'd like us to support the resolution from the township of Georgian Bay requesting implementation of a. To call to action from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada calls to action report, and that's CA two thousand and twenty-one, one oh four.
A second for that resolution is councillor Burbak, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Anything further on the consent agenda? If not, we'll go to new business. Councillor Henderson and councillor Ingram. Councillor Henderson, you're on mute.
Sorry. So I received an email today and it's. It's was sent out by MPP Lisa Gretzky, and it's, they're calling on the government to reevaluate the decision about. Downloading and the automation of ODSP. And I was wondering, I I sent it to Kim, I know she hasn't had a lot of time to look at it because we just received it today. But I just wondered if Ms. McFarroy would have any comments on this, whether we could endorse this resolution? Or whether more needs to be added or removed from it, or do we need a bit more time to look at it and decide on that because. It's going to affect municipalities quite a bit.
Good afternoon, through you, your worship. I did quickly review the correspondence, what I will say is we don't know enough about the model yet from the province. We do know what is being uploaded from the administration end of it, but we have not, the province has not been clear as to what is being downloaded to the municipalities. We do know what is being uploaded from the administration end of it, but we have not, the province has not been clear as to what is being downloaded to the municipalities. So we do not have enough information. Uh, the subsections that are listed, um, within the, within the letter is. Uh, is items that we have supported in the past on advocating for specifically the increase of rates. So I, I think, uh, as you've seen in previous council reports, these are items that we advocate for at a local level.
Thank you. So do you feel like we should be waiting to endorse something like this or? Would it be okay to go ahead?
Uh, through the worship, I, I, I do not have enough information to make a recommendation at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Thompson.
Um, thank you, your worship. Um, just wondering, um, if council, um, if, if councilor Henderson could forward the letter? And with the council direction to, uh, to staff to review it and report back at the appropriate time when there is sufficient information.
Perfect. Consider it done. Thanks.
Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. Um, so this is an item that I have mentioned to both the city clerk and the C A O. But I wondered as staff work towards diversity and inclusion for the corporation. I wondered, um, a, a very easy, simple item that we could do. Um, is to add our pronouns, um, beside our names on the Zoom, uh, template that everyone sees on their screen. Um, because we, we do know that there are people within our city that, um, are not, uh, single gendered. And so, uh, I'd like to make that recommendation that, that we all add our pronouns on Zoom.
Second, councilor Burbak. Uh, my question would be for Ms. Thompson. I know you're working on a corporate policy. Would it be easier for this to fall under it when you, when you finish it with H R or would you like this done a one off so already?
Um, through your worship, um, the, the city already has an internal policy where we have, um, encouraged staff to add the pronouns to their emails. So, and a number of staff have done that already. We can take this back and look at, uh, that particular policy. And, um, I will talk to the acting director of H R about including this on, uh, Zoom meetings as well. For both staff and members of council.
Is that acceptable, councilor Ingram, if we make it part of a, a corporate by policy?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's just a very simple, public way we can show that we're, um, promoting diversity and inclusion.
Thank you. Councilor Burbak, you're okay then if staff take that. Thank you. Anything further on this? Not all those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Anything else under new business? Councilor Vazalacos.
Um, I thought I'd bring this up under new business. I didn't want to bring it up when, when the hospital foundation was here talking because this isn't really, it's not. Their, um, challenge, but it's the province's challenge. I just, I continue to have. A problem with municipalities, um, being asked to provide funding for. Equipment and capital campaigns for hospitals in their communities when, um, healthcare is a, is a provincial. Um, responsibility. Um, and one of the challenges that I have with it is, is that it creates disparity across communities. And, and it downloads a huge cost to the most regressive of our tax bases. And so you can see some communities that can fundraise money have better equipment and access to better technology. Than communities that may be struggling at any given time. And, and I, I would like, um. Us to send a letter to the minister of health, our M P P, the critics for, um, health. For the opposition parties and also copy to A M O, um, outlining our concerns with the continued lack of funding. For capital and equipment, um, for, for our hospitals. And the continued downloading of those costs, both onto, um, like fundraising and basically charity. And, um, municipalities.
Thank you. Councilor Burbak, seconding that. Discussion. Councilor Clifford.
Yeah, I'd be interested in a background if the, if the province in the past has paid for it. Like I'm not, I, I, I know as long as I've been on council, we've always said this. So it is it. Like has it been a time where the province has paid for all this? I'd be curious to find that out.
I would just say that from the research I've done in the past, uh, it's quite common. Municipalities, uh, that don't get the equipment, uh, paid for by the province embark to make their community better by going out and doing so. And while it's a disparity because some communities can fundraise over others. Um, we have, you know, I hate to say it, we have to look after the people in our own community. And if we hadn't done that, we wouldn't have a hospice because they weren't planning on giving us capital dollars for it. We wouldn't have an M R I or a CAT scan machine here. So we get stuck with the decision. Uh, whether or not we want to help, uh, move the quality of life along here. It's, to be frank, I think we all know there's disparities across the allocation of provincial resources depending on. Uh, who's in power and who your member is and whether they're part of the government or, and especially if they're part of cabinet. And I think we've, um, maybe gone through a lot of that sometimes. Councilor Vazalacos.
And I, I, you know, I'm not, that's why I didn't want to bring that up when they came to us. I think it's something that municipalities that can, should. I just, I just think that also maybe this is something that A M O could take on, um, on behalf of all municipalities. And, and we have to look out for our own, but I think also we have to show at least a little bit of advocacy. Um, for the municipal system as a whole.
Okay, thank you. All right. So you're making that referral and I believe councilor Burbak, you would, uh, second that. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you. Anything further under new business? All right. I think, uh, we're gonna, we've been two hours. We'll take a quick five minute break for those that need it and we'll come right back and go into community services. Uh, subcommittee. So we'll see you within five minutes. All right. Before we head into community services, I'm just gonna now take the motion to adjourn to reconvening committee. Thank you, councilor Henderson and councilor Burbak. All those in favor? And that's carried. Councilor BD, over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I will call the community services sub, or community services committee to order. Item number two is disclosure of curinary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Item three is your subcommittee minutes that were provided for you. Item number four is delegations for which we have none scheduled. And item five is report the manager of transit. And we have item five point one being that the delegation of authority to sign the bus stop and shelter agreement. We do have our manager of transit available, uh, for comments. Should anyone have any questions for him? Councilor Clifford.
I will move the subcommittees.
Moved by councilor Clifford. Second by. Councilor Bunting. Is there any questions or comments for our manager of transit? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Item six, the report of the manager of recreation and marketing. Item six point one. Item six point one. Is. Sorry, just having to stretch on my screen. Bear with me here folks. Item six point one being the community outdoor basketball court at the Stratford education recreation complex. And we had, uh, a great presentation by the organization and we do have a staff recommendation. Moved by councilor Burbak and second by. Councilor Ritzma. Questions? Councilor Henderson?
No, I was just gonna second it.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments for our manager of recreation? Councilor Bunting.
Yeah, first of all, through you, uh, I think this is great. I really do. Uh, it's a wonderful opportunity. The only thing that sort of came to mind was the fact that. You've got pickleball, you've got soccer, you've got beach volleyball. And everything else all in the same place. And if there's, depending on tournaments and various other things. I, I just have some concerns over, over a parking, uh, capacity. Uh, should a lot of things be going on at the same time? And I imagine a lot of things will go on at the same time.
Um, could I have our, uh, our manager of community, uh, to, uh, of recreation to comment on the parking? Mr. Herndon? If he's available. If not, our director of community services.
Oh, through the chair, it appears the manager of recreation is currently not on the line. Um, and neither is the director of corporate or, or community services. My apologies.
So councilor Bunting, uh, with the understanding that, uh, there, there are comments or your, your concerns being addressed regarding. Parking, uh, notwithstanding, do you have any other, um? Reasons for, for this not to be supported?
No, I, I totally support the idea. I'm just expressing a concern. I do believe there's an area which is just north of the, uh, beach volleyball area. That could be utilized, um, as, as additional parking. Uh, of course, there's other areas around there, but I, I think it tournaments and so on and so forth, especially with people coming from, from out of town. Uh, it, it could be a little chaotic. That's all. Okay.
And perhaps we could bring that back to our, our, our manager and our director to, uh, to provide some further insight into that. Councilor Gaffney?
Uh, yeah, like, yes, I, I understand what councilor Bunting is asking. Immediate, immediately adjacent to the basketball court, there's, there's that small parking lot, but. When you consider all the parking lots on the search site, plus, uh, there's always a couple extra spots in concert Clifford's driveway that. Right next door, so. I think there's plenty of parking within walking distance.
For sure. And, uh. I think that, councilor Ritzma?
Well, I, I think the clerk wanted to add something there and.
My apologies if I missed, madam clerk, please.
Through the chair, I just wanted to confirm that we would bring this information, uh, to staff. And then we will follow back up with members of the committee with some additional information related to parking.
Thank you. Councilor Ritzma?
Yeah, and, and just in, in, in support, I know previously, um, in a former lifetime, I had six basketball hoops. At that, that exact location. And, uh, we ran for years our candidate three on three basketball and it was very well received in the community. And I, I think the key piece here is having, um, city support for the longevity of it. I, I think it, it will go a long way to, to ensure that it's maintained. Um, and, you know, it well run. So I, I, I love the location and, um. Certainly, I love the idea of, of basketball having a, a significant footprint up there. So certainly fully support.
Thank you. Councilor Henderson, then councilor Vazalacos.
I was just gonna say, since Bruce Whitaker came to council and got approval to put the basketball net. Um, where the skate park used to be. And since then, he's added two more. And, you know, every time you drive by, you see kids there. So it's obviously a sport that we need to be recognizing and have a standardized court for them to at least have one place outside that they can go and do this. I know some of the schools can be, we all saw what happened when COVID happened. We weren't allowed to go into the schools, right? So, and the outdoor spaces opened up before the inside. So this, yeah, I think it's great.
Thank you. Councilor Vazalacos.
I was just gonna, I, I'm, I'm in support of this project. I think it's a great idea. Um. One of the things that would alleviate councilor Bunting's concern around parking is if we made sure that there was plenty of. Bike parking in the area. So kids who wanted to use the courts would have somewhere safe to, to park their bikes. And, and, and use active transportation to get there. So, so hopefully once, you know, um, staff could have a look and make sure that there's bike parking up there. And visible, um, from where the kids are playing. I just wanted also to say, I, I appreciate very much seeing in the financial impact part of the report. Where we're looking at ongoing maintenance expenses and operation expenses, but adding to it increasing the recreation facilities reserved now. For anticipation of needing to do repairs or replacement for it in the future. And, and that's really very appreciated as we start to add these facilities. Um, in the long run.
Thank you, councilor Vazalacos. Councilor Burbak, you had your hand?
Yes, thank you. I agree. Yes, thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with Councilor Vazalacos on both points. I do think that this this court will probably be, if it goes ahead, will be used the majority of the time by people arriving maybe on foot or on bike. I don't think it's, the majority of use will be tournament time. So it's well worth it, even if there's never a tournament there to to have this facility available for for our kids. And yeah, but as Councilor Henderson said, that a lot of the courts around schools are not the correct size, the nets are not at the the proper height. So having a facility that's up to to current standards is is really important. So I fully support this project.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further comments, I will call a question. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. Item seven is for your information. So I would accept a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Burbak and seconded by Councilor Ritzma. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Through you, Your Worship, returning to your agenda. Item fifteen, Council reconvene. Item fifteen point one, are there any declarations of curinary interest stated at the committees to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing no hands?
Item fifteen point two is committee reports, and item fifteen point two point one is from the Community Services Committee, and that is item five point one, delegation of authority to sign bus stop and shelter agreements.
Councilor Beatty and Councilor Burbak. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item fifteen point three is reading of the bylaws, and there are two bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Bylaw eleven point seven is the delegation authority to sign certain bus stop agreements. And bylaw eleven point eight is the confirmatory bylaw, and these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Moved by Councilor Henderson and Councilor Burbak to be taken collectively. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. First and second reading, by Councilor Bunting and Councilor Vazalacos. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Third and final reading. Thank you, Councilor Gaffney and Councilor Clifford. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. I believe that brings us to the close of the agenda for today. I'll take a motion to return. Councilor Beatty and Councilor Burbak. Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thanks so much and have a good evening, everyone.